This work session of the State and City Council is going to come to order. And we have one item of business tonight. It's called Improving Staff Reports. And we have, oh God, why don't I have the names and the things I need?
Mr. Mayor.
One, don't I? Yes, please, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to introduce Bonnie Johnson from the University of Kansas who is here tonight to talk about staff reports. I was on my professional website, ICMA, and came across her research. I was fascinated by it. I liked it. During our council goal-setting, one of the things that councillors talked about was what we can do to try to make our staff reports more accessible, easier to understand. So this seemed like a perfect topic. I reached out with a wing and a prayer and said, would you be willing to let us be part of your test group or at least share your research because I think we'd be interested to know. And so, I really like what she's doing. I'm really excited that she's here. And with that, I will turn it over to her.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Well, I'm very pleased to be here. As Keith said, I'm Bonnie Johnson. I'm a professor of urban planning from the University of Kansas. And if you went through some of all that stuff I gave you, you have heard my voice, you have seen me quite a bit. So I will kind of get straight to the point here and let's do some research. So I have put in front of you at your spots two different pieces of paper. One is an informed consent statement, staff report feedback. And this is a requirement of the University of Kansas that if you do research that involves humans like you, we are supposed to do it in an ethical manner. And so, this is the form to give me consent to ask you questions about what you think about staff reports. And it also gives the phone number of who to call if I don't do this properly. So please, if you want to participate tonight, fill that out and I'll pick it up before I leave. The other thing, and I should say, we do have some people in the audience. If, for example, you have read some staff reports as a citizen and have some feedback over what you think about them, I love, as you maybe can tell, I like to talk about and think about staff reports. So I'm going to put my cards here on a chair. And if any of you feel like you want to talk about staff reports, I'll talk about it with you. So there's my card. Okay. And then the other thing I put in front of you is a sheet with some notes that you can make some notes. These are the questions I'm going to use this evening. And we're just going to go down those. And if you want to jot something down, then I will have that and preserve it and can get it before I leave. And I think that's everything before I get started. Okay. Well, like I said, if you've looked at the materials I sent, you know that I was a practicing city planner. I teach city planning now. I've been on a planning commission. I've been a citizen reading staff reports. And I just started to think, maybe there's a better way of doing these. And thought, I should talk to elected officials, planning commissioners, staff who write and read these to see if we can come up with something better. And so that's the essence of my project. And I see we've got public works and police and library and finance over there. Even though I'm coming at this from looking at it through a planning lens or the planning staff report, you guys do these sorts of reports too. You might call it a memo to the city commission, but it's the same sort of thing. And so please jump in with any ideas as well. Okay. Well, the first thing I want to do, and I don't know if I'm going to do this, I have the microphone over here. The first thing I want to do is, if we think about staff reports, which generally are things written by planners, your staff that you've hired, and it tells you about what's going on in the city, you use it to make decisions, how to vote, how to know what's going on. And so if we say, "Staff report," what is the first word that comes to your mind when you hear "staff report"?
I think it's informational.
Okay.
I think of data.
Okay.
That's what I was going to say.
That took your -- anybody else?
Metrics.
Metrics? Anything else?
New problems.
New problems?
It's not very scientific.
Anything else? Communication?
Trends.
Anything else?
There's a good word in here, I think, with our staff reports and the staff reports that I've seen written. Explanatory. Kind of explains the thought process behind staff's decision.
Well, I commend you on the word that most commonly comes up, did not come up here, which was boring.
That's because I'm sitting next to our planner. I would have been one of the first ones.
His art.
Well, the other word which planners have said is drudgery. And so those are our kind of things that come up. And I did take a look at some of your planning staff reports. And they do two things that are unusual and good when you compare them to the hundreds of staff reports I've looked at across the country. The first thing that's unusual is that you give your elected officials choices. You have a recommendation and it has a list of some choices there. That is very rare, believe it or not. The other thing that the staff reports do that I have not seen anywhere else, but I'm going to tell everybody about it, is that the staff says something to the effect of pending hearing from the public at the public hearing. Now, here's our recommendation so far. We haven't heard what is to be said at the public hearing, but this is what we think so far. I haven't seen that in any other staff report. But it's really a good recognition of how important that is to hear from the public. So kudos to all of you for having that in your staff reports.
Good job, Dan.
Yeah, good job. Pat yourself on the back. But so, why don't we go on to my first question, which is what do you like or appreciate about staff reports?
Well, I'll tell you, as a public works director and formerly as an engineering consultant, a staff report helps the engineering consultant decide what would be needed for the development. And speaking in that related voice, as a consultant, it helps dictate how much money it's going to cost a consultant to do the project for, see if it's a feasible project. Generally speaking, that's what I should be getting out of a staff report. And so that's what, you know, I like that.
I would say along the lines of what you were saying that you liked about our staff reports, that they gave, they give us the options, is that even if we don't use those, it's still like a starting point and we can kind of go off of that.
I like that they're qualitative, not, you know, narrative-based necessarily. So when I go through them, I don't feel like it's a drudgery. I feel like I can look at, from month to month to month, where those changes are really quickly. Looking for deltas.
Anything I say after that's going to be lame.
Not at all.
I like pictures.
Pictures.
There's a lot of visual people.
I like pictures.
I personally...
What was that? Trends?
They typically show trends.
Trends?
I was going to say something similar. I prefer more data and trends and things like that that I can visualize in my head, but seeing the numbers there in a table or something like that, that helps me personally.
It's probably up there already, but I like it when staff reports point us in a direction. I mean, it's the options thing, but actually come out and say, yeah, we really should do this, or we can put this off for a while. You know, they're best guests. They're professionals. And I want to be able to respect their views on things.
Anything else?
I like this. Sometimes I give you a history of where you're at. Like, this is where we started and this is where we're at.
This is my wife's. I wouldn't have picked this color.
Okay. Well, then, my next one is, do you have any worries or concerns about staff reports?
I would say that when you're not always in it, it's not something that you can just pick up and read. I appreciate our staff, that I can go to them and say, okay, you need to break this down for me and explain it. And I think maybe one of my worries is that it's not, they're not things that maybe the general public can look at and easily understand.
Bonnie, are we talking also about the staff reports you gave us for homework?
Oh, we're going to get to those.
Okay, so I'm not going to refer. We're just talking about Dan's staff reports.
Well, this is a pick on Dan, but in general, anything that you have read at any point.
All right. Well, I wouldn't say Dan's are very lengthy, but...
And Dan can jump in here as well.
I think Dan's are probably about the right length, but there are some out there that are very lengthy. It would turn me off if I was a planning commissioner or a city council member that had to read those and they had lives outside that responsibility. I'm an engineer, though. I like short, to the point, bullet point, buh buh buh, let's move on type thing.
Okay.
I think for me, because I don't know how the information is generated, and it's, I don't question necessarily the accuracy of how that information is generated, but it's sort of an education for me to kind of understand, like, if the library is providing reporting, like, is there automated methods or are they, you know, counting by hand? And then you get into the question of, you know, quality and accuracy of information. But again, it's not a question of whether they're doing it right. It's more of understanding the process behind it.
Can I ask a point of clarification here? I want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing.
Yeah.
Because I'm sensing we might be talking about monthly, like, data reports and then also the very comprehensive, like, detailed reports on decisions that we're going to be making, staff reports. And I want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing before I comment, because it sounds like we might not be talking about the same thing each councillor here.
So really look at, and it sounds like you're, I mean, I'm looking at reports that give you the information that then also has a recommendation and then you're having to make a decision.
Right. The things that we have included in council meetings.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure. So, yes, I think, I don't really have any worries or concerns about those. I am pleased with the length as well, because I feel like it doesn't, like, it doesn't give me too much information and it gives me enough that if I have a question, I am prompted by the information that's in there. And, but I am with councillor Ort that perhaps it is a little bit more technical, so maybe less like, I know that they have to be professional, but maybe a little, my only concern is how someone else would read it, that it doesn't have, doesn't feel that they have the same access to Dan as we have, even though they do have the same access to Dan that we have. So, that makes sense.
From my perspective, it's very much making sure we cover the pertinent points without missing critical elements or going into too much detail in something that really isn't critical. I mean, so, I always review them with the worry of, are we covering the proper, the proper items and providing the correct amount of detail?
I mean, what I have heard from planners, as I've talked to them across the country, is that these are not easy. And that's why it's good to talk about them every now and then, because they're a challenge to write with lots of different audiences and that kind of thing. Okay?
I think councillor Hook makes a good point, though. When I'm looking at this, I'm looking at land use decision staff reports. Very much different than a report that I'm going to provide to the city council. So my question to you is then, most land use planners have to address any kind of land use action based on the city's code, right? So they're writing a report based on code and generating this report based on that. Where I am not doing that. So there's two different reports we're really talking about. We're talking about, what you're talking about here is a land use decision staff report.
Well, I mean, it...
I mean, some of it can be used on different types of reports.
Yeah.
But primarily, that's what we're talking about.
Well, and if you had to write a report where you were having to refer to your engineering guidelines, or these are the street standards, or this is the highway standards, or these are the standards for the type of pipe we need, so you would, not quite the same, but you probably often are referring to some sort of guideline or standard as well. Yeah, bringing that to the table.
All right.
Yeah. Well, my next question is, I gave to you what I called avant-garde staff reports, which were just weirdo staff reports, that I have one that I put in front of you that was the game board. And I will, I'm going to reiterate again, I do not really think that we can have staff reports this way. I'm not seriously saying we should have a staff report that's a game board, or a mobile, or a collage. I was doing those to see if I could generate some new thinking about staff reports, maybe something we haven't thought of. And so I put in front of you the game board staff report, which is kind of giving you the instance in Lawrence, Kansas, where I live, of should they build a new Menards or not? Do you guys have Menards here?
No.
A Menards is a cross between a Walmart and a lumberyard. You can get two-by-fours and a gallon of milk at a Menards. So, little bit of everything. Large, big box business. And in this instance, the future land use plan for the area showed this for future apartments, not for commercial. And it was zoned for residential. The Menards company came in and wanted to change it to commercial to build a Menards. What was interesting here is it really wasn't clear-cut what the best decision was. If you looked at the future land use plan, it called for it to be apartments. But right next door to this was a Home Depot, Best Buy, big box stores, right next door. And this piece of property was sandwiched between these commercial businesses and a creek. And so you could theoretically make the argument that perhaps it was best to end the commercial at this creek versus to end it and have residential. So it wasn't clear-cut, although the future land use plan did call for this to be residential. And so your game board there shows at the top, the pieces are left to right, east to west, what's around the Menards proposed property, which is the star. And then there's all sorts of game pieces, which are things that commonly come up in Lawrence, Kansas, about whether we think something is a good idea or not. Its impact on the wetlands, its impact on trees. What does it look like? Does it reflect the kind of limestone, prairie-style architecture that we like here in Lawrence? Is this something that's going to threaten our downtown? Are we going to overbuild retail? So those are kind of all the game pieces that you would maybe keep in mind. And then at the bottom are some choices. Maybe go back to the past, which there wasn't anything there in the past. Leave it the way it is, which at that moment, it was a mobile home park providing affordable housing in Lawrence, Kansas. Or apartments, or Menards, or something else. And so trying to lay that out as if we were going to play that as a game, how would we use those pieces? Again, not seriously talking about this seriously as a staff report, but maybe it could spark some new thinking. So if you took a look at the avant-garde staff reports or this one that you have in front of you, does it spark any new or unexpected ideas for you?
Well, I think it's graphic. I mean, it's very graphic, so you don't have to digest too much information to get on some sort of a path. It's not something I'd want to hang my hat on, but you know.
Yeah, yeah.
If I'm having a community meeting, I'd give it out to everybody and kind of get an idea. Maybe.
Just kind of along what Lance said as well. I think this would be really good for the public's consumption, maybe not necessarily council. Better articulation of the details would be better for us.
For me, it definitely prompts me questioning if our code would even allow for us to dream or make decisions like this, because I mean, sometimes the code says, you know, you have to make decisions based on these crit, well, not sometimes, it does say you have to make decisions based on these criteria. And so sometimes it almost feels like you're like a little bit forced into making a decision because if it doesn't fall outside of that criteria, then, but this kind of makes you think, maybe we, maybe we could plan our city a little bit more and have, you know, a little bit more public input of how that looks than what is currently understood by me.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and in this case, to be able to build the Menards, which went against the future land use plan, they were applying for an amendment to the land use plan, and then they would apply for a rezoning. And so this is at the stage of trying to argue, your future land use plan isn't right. You could do something else. So they're reopening that, the future land use plan, trying to reopen it.
One of the things the game board kind of does is operate as a pictorial flowchart that could help the decision-makers understand, kind of, here's possible steps along the way to be making these decisions.
I like flowcharts.
Yeah, this makes me think of when we were doing the transportation plan and the economic development plan, when you were getting the community involved, excuse me, getting the community involvement. This was, this, we had a lot of pictures and you could go over and put, you know, it was interactive. You could put dots different places and it wasn't just all written information. And along the lines of what the mayor said, not everybody is, you know, absorbs information that way. Sometimes some pictures are nice, too.
I love pictures.
I'll give you that, Mr. Mayor.
Love flowchart. I love the flowchart, too.
Yeah. Yeah, the flowchart idea is really interesting. And on here, you also have the different options.
Yeah.
So you, like, you let people see what, you know, if you went this way, what would it look like? If you went this way, what could it look like?
Well, and, and kind of making it to where you can take that option and put it up where the gold star is and see whether you like what that does, kind of.
One thing that would be handy to know, I'm impressed with how flat this is back there. And I don't know, I guess that's Kansas. See a long way.
You can't, the nearby creek, you can't see the bottom of it either. Unlike here, I was noticing, oh, you can see the rocks.
Anyway, can we assume that the folks in this place, Lawrence, are pretty comfortable with their master plans for these areas, their overall goals for the growth of the community? Can we assume that?
No.
Oh...
You can't even assume they have master plans for these areas.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, so in this...
It's not Oregon.
Yeah, yeah. Although the state of Kansas does require a comprehensive plan and that it be updated every year, but that's about it. But we do have a comprehensive plan, future land use plan, but it is hotly debated on a regular basis.
Are you saying they don't have master plans for their utilities and parks?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But you can't assume that they do.
No, I mean, states are different, but in Kansas, we do, we at least have a plan.
Okay. It just seems like if people were comfortable with those long-range plans that the communities made, you know, by consensus, hopefully, that you'd have to start with working with that and, yeah, that would be the first step, I'd say.
Yeah, yeah. And that is very much the first step. And then the argument begins from there about whether the plan is appropriate or not.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Well, my next one is, how do you use staff reports in your decision-making?
I love my staff reports that I get to read because they... I love my staff reports that I get to read because they give me a lot of the background information that I need. One of my favorite parts of them is the facts, like the known facts that you have. The stuff that's black and white, and you know it to be truth, and then from there on out, it's, it's really well separated as to what's fact and what's opinion or expertise, or, you know, general ideas of what could or should be. So I really appreciate the way that they're laid out, even though, you know, I discuss the technical language, I feel like it is appropriate in those types of reports to have technical language, and technical writing is not easy. But I, they're like the majority of what, you know, I'm getting my information on this issue about, and then the rest, you wait until you're here and you hear public comment, and, you know, any, anything, any other information that's come in in between. So, anyway, I really like the staff reports.
I would say for me, it's kind of a jump-off point for future research and questions for staff. So that's how I treat it, I try to identify that as I go through them.
That's what I was going to say, just the prompting for questions and clarification.
It's also good to show that we actually are basing our decisions on information, and then to read it and then go back and have those questions answered even further. And I feel like a lot of us do a good job of asking those questions again here at the council, so that the public has an opportunity to hear those as well.
I think for me, it's the, it's the information that I see as challenges, so that I can do kind of some of the background work prior to coming in. What are we going to get questions on? What do I need to look into a little bit more? But be, you know, helping us be prepared for the council.
Well, if the staff report were to change, could, would that change? What do you mean?
I, I think what you're saying is if they were to change into somewhere similar than this, I'd still want the articulated detail that we see in them currently, although these visual aids are very helpful.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, these things that we're mentioning are detail-oriented pieces, that if we go to some graphic-only or board kind of thing, it's, we would still need that information prior to and during.
So if you looked through, there were all the kind of different staff reports, some were the avant-garde, weirdo ones, others were more normal. What parts did you like or not like of those different ones that you saw?
I got to tell you, I really liked, I mean, there's pluses and minuses to all of them. The newsletter I liked with the best, except for the first two pages, I thought was a little bit annoying. The structure, but I thought was really, really well done.
I was trying to find it. I appreciated from Maryland, Frederick, they used literally a checklist, I thought that was kind of interesting.
I like checklists.
Yeah, I'm with Councilor Patty on the checklist, because then you know, like, these things were like actually done, and it's nice. You don't have to search through to do that checklist in your head.
I think if you did the video, you'd still have to provide the text, the background information. I'm not sure you'd want to do that in the video. The newsletter, the same kind of thing. Didn't include, I mean, the newsletter looked fine, but it didn't include any kind of applicant answers to code questions. I thought that's really kind of important, and to show how the planner came up with their decision. And I really hated Lawrence, Kansas, number three. It was 71 pages long, I'm not sure anybody would want to sit through that.
We did, when our original research, talked to communities all across the country, asking them for a simple staff report, and we got an 83-pager asking for a simple staff report, so it happens.
That's for the people from, I know, North Dakota, where they don't have much to do at night, stay inside by the fire.
Anything else you did or didn't like? And I particularly want to ask about the video. Is there any, I mean, is a video useful, not useful, meh, meh?
I feel like a video is really useful. You should always think about accessibility. People retain and understand information in different ways, and I think that the more ways you can get it out there for people, the better. And I know that that's kind of coming up in your next question.
Yeah.
I think with the video, though, and some of these other ones that were mentioned, it's, it can enhance the staff reports, but it can't replace them.
I 100% agree with that.
So you're, I mean, and people, I mean, we know people's attention spans, they're only going to watch a video for so long, so you got to get those, you got to get those points out, and you're not going to be able to get all the information that you need. So it's not a replacement. But I would agree, there's some people, you know, there's someone that I know that has dyslexia, they're not going to read, they cannot, you know, retain and read a whole staff report, but a video, so they can kind of get the gist of what is going on would be helpful.
Yeah, so, so my next question is related to that. So how should we make these staff reports available? You know, paper, podcast, video, online, poster, any other ways?
So I think that you should always try to, I mean, again, not replace what's already happening, because I feel like what Councilor Ort said is like, those are important to have, the staff reports, and not technical format that's very detailed. But I think about it from a community standpoint, and just another way for me as a counselor to understand the issues. Podcasts are big right now, and you want to speak to every audience that you can. So you want things in paper format, you want them in audio format, visual format, if you can do that. And then one thing that I feel like we're missing is, we have a large Latinx community, and we don't have that in a Spanish format. And so I, I would love to see everything that we churn out to be also available in Spanish, and, and take a look at our demographic and see if there's another language that would also be helpful.
And the cool thing is, is you can measure all that stuff, right? Like if it's YouTube, you can see how many hits it's had. If it's on a webpage, you can see how many hits it's had. Podcasts, you can see how many times it's downloaded, to see what people are using. So we're not necessarily wasting time on a format that, you know, one person reads.
Right, but also getting the appropriate push out to the community to let them know that it's available, and like, really pushing that hard.
Yeah, there'd have to be, yeah, there'd have to be some marketing piece to it to get the word out.
Well, we already put out a news, we already put out a newsletter as a city. We could do some sort of news, like newsletter format that isn't as measurable. It goes out, we know that it goes out to the homes that have the utilities, but it's not as measurable as what you're saying.
I would just say, and it's not really necessarily for state, but in general, staff reports and things of that nature on the city's website need to be easy to find and locate for people. Sometimes that can be difficult, I know. People have expressed concern about that.
From that vanishing world, I like paper.
Yeah.
And what is it that you like about paper?
I like to read.
I like to write on it.
Yeah, that's what I was-
I mean, I'd still use highlighters. Look at you.
Well, I want to be mindful of your time and your other audience here. Is there anything I have not asked, but you'd like to, to share with me?
I did like the formatting of a couple of the ones that you, I liked the use of the sidebar. I thought that was, I mean, I've seen some, last year, we were doing the same thing that we were doing with our budget document. And I found other cities that use the sidebar in very creative ways. The only thing I can think of when we're doing that is, I don't know, we're a small town, limited department sizes, if the staff has the time to prepare such a creative-looking document, we'll be spending more time on that versus my day-to-day duties. Although it'd be nice to be able to do that, some of them are really clever, and I thought they could be used real well to get our message out.
I think that's a super-important point that Lance is making. What we have now is sufficient, you know, getting us the information that we need as a council, but you do have to be super-mindedful of the bandwidth of your city employees, because they are tackling a full-time job. And so I guess something to consider would be, that this might be something that you would do for internships, for people that are in local colleges, that are studying these things, having them come in, and they're doing like a practicum at the city. Bringing in new knowledge to the city staff that maybe the city staff didn't know was out there, and they can learn from them while they're also learning, it's like an exchange-type program. I benefited from that at Salem Police Department when I was a crime analyst intern there, and it was a practicum. So I, I feel like we have to be careful not, you know, to not get like too ahead with like these cool ideas. We also have to think about respecting the time of the city staff and their, their current duties that they have. But being more creative, and how can we make this happen without costing the city too much, or anything at all, and maybe even benefiting the city by bringing in volunteers that, that are going to gain something mutually.
I think one, one of the things that hasn't been discussed is, particularly when we were getting away from the typical written memo-type staff report, is how, how would it be reflected in the record of the proceedings when we go up on appeal? Whereas what we do now is easy, it's a, it's a document, it's in there, you know, if we were to be doing game boards, or videos, or whatever. Right. How does that reflect in the record when, when the courts are looking at it?
Yeah, that's a good point. Well, any, any last hopes and wishes for staff reports?
I definitely have a hope and wish for staff reports. I would love to see our police staff reports kind of transform into a more crime analyst-type focus with comp stat, reports that have a lot more visuals, and really make sense of the data that we're collecting. I'm sure that Councilor Patty has some thoughts on that as well, because he has expertise in that area as well, so. But I feel like our police reports could really use some sprucing up for not only us as counselors, but also for the community, because I'm aware of what they can be, and I don't get a lot from what we currently have.
I'll just echo Counselor Hook's ideas there. Part of the concern, too, is just the RMS function, it's difficult to pull data out of, excuse me, records management system, thank you, Counselor Hook. And in addition to that, you know, some mapping, a little bit more focus on specific types of crimes, where there maybe should be targeting additional patrols, that kind of thing, that would be helpful.
Anything else? Okay, well, thank you all very much for giving me your time and your attention, and just to let you know, next steps, I will, I have visited with communities across the country, and I'll be putting that information together into some results, and I will send that to Keith, and, and so that you guys can see the results of this research. Also, this semester, my class of students will be working with the city of Topeka's planning department to do some video staff reports that can be a record, that might go into court someday, and to figure out how can they do that and not be too much of a burden on staff time. So we're going to experiment this semester and see if it can be done. We don't know, we'll see. Well, thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.